January 12th meeting of the Stockbridge Board of Selectmen. I'm going to use this as a paper towel for that. And first, let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Harold, do you want to come up and dig this?
Right here.
Yeah, right here.
Ready?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag. To the United States, in the name of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any announcements by board members?
Yes, I will. So mid-February, the pilot program, which is through the RTAC, which is in Great Barrington. So it'll be Great Barrington, Egremont, and Stockbridge. We'll have, for a year, we have funding to do public transportation. So it'll be on Sundays, and for people that work, want to go to church or grocery shopping. And I'll give more updates in February, but it is set to begin in mid-February for us.
And that's like, that's on like a bus route. That's like an on-demand system, isn't it?
Yes.
So it's like Uber. You literally call, and they come and pick you up, and then they bring you back.
Yeah.
And is it fully funded, or is there a nominal fee?
Oh, it's funded, there'll be a nominal fee.
Okay.
But we'll...
It's still better than Uber. Not that Uber's bad.
Yeah. And, oh, now I wanted to thank Hugh, because there's a new stone walkway by the park, and it looks really nice. That was all I had.
Good job.
Did we, did we take care of the flag out front? Do you know?
We're working on that.
Okay.
Yep.
And when do we think I'll have to...
What's that?
Is that a hard thing to fix? Is it?
No, I got Vinnie working on it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, well, leave it at that. The only announcement I have is that Senator Mark, the new state senator for the western region of Massachusetts, has invited the town to a coffee and conversation. And it's going to be here, I think, in this room, some morning in February. And he just wants to come in and hear what our concerns are. So I promised to only have one or two, and everyone's welcome, and we're actually doing it in this room because it can be on Zoom. So I just want to let everybody know and start to promote it, because if you love the idea, most of these don't have the ability to Zoom, and, you know, we've got a lot of folks who can't, you know, come to a meeting in February, so that's a good thing. That's the only announcement I have. Anybody else?
I'm good.
All right, so we need to open our special permit hearing for 15 Lakeview. Is the owner or is her representative here?
There is. This is Rob Ackroyd of Greylock Design. How are you folks?
Hi, Rob. How are you?
Really well, thank you. Nice to see everyone again. I represent Scott and Mary Ann Goodell from 15 Lakeview Drive, and I'm going to share my screen here, and I'll tell you exactly what it is we are seeking this evening from the board.
Make it most...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Hang on.
I was looking for my notes.
Hang on a sec.
I move that we open the hearing to consider the application for a special permit hearing for Scott and Mary Goodell, for Goodell, for a property located at 15 Lakeview Drive, and waive the reading of the notice, and incorporate the notice into the minutes of the hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we need a roll call vote. I, Patrick.
I, Chuck.
I, Jamie.
The following procedures will be followed. Testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. Only one person will be permitted to speak at a time. All discussion will go through the chair. All parties will conduct themselves civilly, and arguments between parties will not be permitted, though you can always disagree. So the applicant is present. I've already asked that question. Each person who testifies, the chair will ask them to identify themselves by saying their name and address for the record, and we prefer, if you're going to speak, that you come up to the podium. And so I'll turn it over to the applicant, or the applicant's representative.
Very good. Thank you, folks. Thanks again. I'm sharing my screen, and on the screen, we have a Massmap or GIS image, just to give you an idea of where we're at. We are at Beechwood, Beechwood Drive, we're at Lot Number 15, Lakeside Drive in the Beechwood neighborhood. My apologies. This is Stockbridge Bowl. This is the bowl in a larger context. If I zoom in, this is 15 Lakeview Drive. Scott and Mary Ann Goodell purchased this, purchased this property, this lot, just recently. This project has come before the town just very recently as a different entity. The previous applicant was De Nacola, proposed to raise the structure and build a new house. We are simply coming before the board this evening. We want to keep the cottage. We want to keep the cottage in its current footprint, its current location. What we're seeking tonight under 6.12, because the lot is undersized, it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, it's just over a third of an acre in the R2 zone, and the structure is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. As you can see, it resides outside of the side yard setbacks. This is the cottage itself. This is a screened in or enclosed in portion of the cottage, and this outline here is an outline of the existing open-air deck. Scott and Mary Ann are seeking permission to add a deck, which is 10 feet wide and runs the length of the building. It would look like this, out and down and over. We feel the board can plant the special permit without being detrimental, as it does not encroach any further into the side yard setbacks, and does not encroach into the rear setback. From my perspective, I think this is a pretty simple and straightforward application, but I'm happy to entertain questions or drill down further. Just as another side note, the cottage sits currently on very old concrete piers. It doesn't have a foundation. We are in the process of actually replacing those concrete piers with helical piers. The proposed construction method for this deck is also helical piers. We have an application in front of the planning board, as we are in the LPOD, and we are in front of the Stockbridge Conservation Commission, and just finished a site walk with the Conservation Commission today, and had a site walk with the planning board earlier this week. We are in discussions with the Conservation Commissions about how to make the deck a little bit more environmentally friendly, as well as take the opportunity to address any existing site issues that have been present since the cottage was created. So, short and sweet, but I'm happy to answer questions further.
Do you guys have any?
My only concern is that it would become, after the deck was built, that it'll build up and become enclosed and become living space.
Well, you know, I can't address anybody that comes after Scott and Mary Ann, but I can address that Scott and Mary Ann have no intentions of that type of activity. But again, I can't address the people that come after Scott and Mary Ann, and I think that would be better addressed through the building permitting application process.
Well, we're gonna, Jamie and I aren't allowed to talk between meetings about issues of substance, but great minds think alike, and I came up with the exact same issue. I called a town council and asked them to draft, draft the following condition for the special permit. I'd like to read it into the record now. Pursuant to zoning by law section 6.1.2, the select board hereby grants a special permit for extension of a non-conforming structure for construction of an enclosed deck of 10 feet by 46 feet, an unenclosed deck, pardon me, of 10 feet by 46 feet on the dwelling at 15 Lakeview Drive, subject to the following condition imposed by section 6.16. There shall be no further alteration or extension of the deck approved herein. Per section 6.3.10, the rights granted by this decision shall not take effect until the notice of this decision, with the stamp shown that has been filed with the town clerk, has been recorded in the registry of deeds as required by MGL Chapter 40A, Section 11. This special permit shall lapse two years from the date of decision, if a substantial use of construction has not begun under the permit by such date, except for good cause as determined by the select board. Well, that's proposed language. Yeah, well, I'm just saying, yeah. So if there's not a plan to expand the deck, I'm assuming there's no opposition to conditioning it?
No, that's a condition we could easily live with. We have no intentions of expanding the deck.
Good, then. So do we want to, with the condition, how do, what's our process with the condition? Do we...
You still need to ask if there's anybody for or against.
Yep. Are there, yes, okay, so let's do that one next. Are there any questions for the, from the board? Any other questions? I'm hearing none. Does anyone wish to speak in favor or in opposition?
I have a hand up for Marie Ryan.
Okay. Hi, Marie.
Sorry, Marie R.
Raftery or Ryan?
Maybe Raftery, yeah.
We're still, you know, we had a site visit, and our next meeting on Tuesday, we will consider this. You know, I can't say anything for the board.
Right. You know, I think that we do the foundation, we do the footprint at the select board. There's three permits. One must get to do a deck in the town. Concom, along the lake anyway, Concom, LPOD with the planning board, and the select board for the, for the structure. So, you know...
We were looking at the piers. We were looking to see if the deck was supported by the piers in place, and, you know, all of that. That was a planning board decision. I mean, that will be...
This doesn't at all encumber you to make one decision or another. The Concom decision is separate from the select boards, as is the planning boards. So this is just simply printing our part of it.
Patrick, can you...
Yeah?
Can you explain that a bit? I mean, we kind of wanted to...
John, can you, is that John?
It is.
Okay. John Hart from Rouseig Mountain.
Right, I'm sorry. And also a member of the Concom. I was unable to get to the site visit that we were having this afternoon. However, you know, there were a number of questions by a number of the members of the Concom, sort of led this into twiandia, and we're not sure how we're going to feel about it. So...
I'm sorry, say that last part again.
I'm not sure how this is going to get...
No, but you're not going to be sure you're going to feel about what?
How this property is going to get determined by the Concom.
Well, that's your prerogative. This, this does not supersede the Concom's jurisdiction.
Okay.
They need all the permits, is my point.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. I move we close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and move to deliberation by the board. Second roll call we need to do, so I, I make that motion, and we need a second. I, Patrick.
I, Chuck.
I, Jamie.
All right, deliberation. So two issues. We've got, one, the permit on the deck, and two is whether you want to work on the condition that, that Don came up with. The condition protects the town, you know, so that people can't then buy right, expand it into, you know, especially where it's something like 25 feet from the lake, and don't hold me a number, I could be wrong. It's close to the lake.
It's very close.
And that, you know, when you build a deck and have a buy-right conversion, it's getting that much closer. So...
Right. And the other concern, but I think it would go under conservation, is that under the deck and the home is very loose soil, so there's, will be...
If it's conservation, I suppose.
Yeah, we don't have any...
He can't come in.
Yeah. So we've got you guys, right.
So we ought to make a motion to accept this with the conditions?
Right. And this is condition one there, that you should read into the record. Okay. Again? Yeah. Somebody should make the motion with condition one.
I'll make the motion, we accept the applicant with the condition.
All right, my eyes count me.
Excuse me, I missed that, and I'm wondering if you're going to read the conditions.
Yes, we're going to read it right now.
I just read this.
Thank you.
Just that one sentence.
Ready? Patrick, are we ready for it?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm not going to write it down, are we? No, no. I've read it already.
I don't need to read that.
I was there.
There shall be no further alteration or extension of the deck approved herein.
No, you have to read the whole thing. No, that's it. That's the condition. The other part is just the formal letter. You read... Oh, I'm sorry, misunderstood. I thought you wanted me to read this whole paragraph again. Oh, all right. Well, you know what?
So I'll make a motion, we accept the applicant with the condition.
Any member move that we approve, or continue to, no, we're not doing that. I move that we approve with this single condition, as read by Jamie Manassi.
Second.
We have a second, yes. Those in favor, I, Patrick.
I, Chuck.
I, Jamie.
Excellent. None opposed. All right. The chair, the chair will entertain a motion to close the hearing, the public hearing, or if continued, a motion to set a date certain. We're not continuing it. So motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Excellent, thank you.
On paper?
Yep.
Hi, Chuck.
We're going to read more of this a little bit, because in the paragraph form, where there's options, the natural tendency is to read the options, and yet, when we, the problem is, I'm giving you the options, and you don't know what's going to happen. I know, I'm going to bullet them out. This is on Patrick's to-do list. Because I do this every time. I'm like, well, we just agreed not to continue, and I mentioned that word. All right.
Next.
Patrick's to-do. Thank you all very much, folks. Have a great evening.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, next we have Take Action in Minutes for October 17. Public comment. Oh, right, public comment. Michael.
Let me pull the stand over.
Oh, push it farther.
You can just come sit down if you want. The bigger yours are better, anyway.
So, I am suggesting that the Finance Committee be elected rather than appointed by the town moderator, because a very unusual situation here in Stockbridge. Gary Johnson has been our town moderator for over 40 years. Therefore, the same person has appointed the members of our Finance Committee for almost a half a century. I support Gary Johnson. I voted for him. He does a good job, and I would be pleased if he remained the town moderator for another 48 years. However, it is not good for the town that one person appointed the Finance Committee for that length of time. Let the people decide who will serve the town and advise the select board. Many other mass communities vote for Finance Committee members. Stockbridge should too. So I would like the select board to approve that a warrant go on our town meeting, so that the town could vote whether they want to keep Gary to appoint the Finance Committee, or that the town goes into something where we vote for the people on the Finance Committee. So I ask the select board to put a warrant.
Jamie, do you have any practical, any comments on that?
Can't comment, can we?
We can't comment. We could, we could put a warrant.
I thought we couldn't comment on public comment.
So if you guys wish...
In Great Barrington, they do that.
Right, so they want...
In Great Barrington, if someone, if the people have comments, the select board does not comment on the comment.
We can't, because it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, but what you guys could choose to do is place this item on the agenda for consideration, or you don't have to, which in effect... Okay.
Plus, we haven't done our homework. I mean, I thought about it.
Excuse me, can I speak?
Sure, John. It's not a public comment.
No, it's not a debate.
This isn't a hearing. Are you going to place this on a future agenda? Okay.
We'll discuss that.
That's the only thing that you have to...
I mean, the question was, can I speak? I don't hear any opportunity.
John, go ahead and speak. We're not going to reply to it.
All right. I admire and immensely admire Gary Johnston, don't get me wrong. I think that he has done an admirable, admirable job over the years of putting people on the planning, or on the Finance Committee that were, you know, well, you know, diverse in terms of their points of view. However, I think that it should become something that the town vets, meaning, okay, you know, Harry Wan, whatever, walks in and says, I want to be on the Finance Committee. It would be nice to know what Harry's qualifications are. The only person who knows who Harry's qualifications are today is Gary Johnston. Though I respect him, I have begun to question his, you know, his whatever.
Okay.
And I think that the town needs to be able to hear, like, we went into that thing at the end of the selectment thing, and there were three cops in there, and we were going to choose who we liked, and that didn't work out so well, but, you know, maybe this will work out better in terms of, you know, there are three or four or five citizens that actually would like to be on the Finance Committee, and they have the qualifications to be on the Finance Committee, and don't have any allegiance to Gary Johnston, or Mary Flynn, or anybody else. It's just, that's what I support. And I support...
I would like to suggest, I would like to suggest that we put this on the agenda, but I'm going to suggest to the advocates for this, that they be prepared, because I'm going to have a detailed agenda item, we're going to need to address the following issues that I'm going to bring up. One, Gary Johnston is elected, and we have other boards like this one that appoint, that are elected, and that appoint folks. We don't make state law, okay? And we're not, we're not, if, if it's because, well, whatever, I'm not going to, I'm not going to know. So we're going to have to talk about why this, this board can be appointed, should not be appointed, and yet the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is going to spend $7,000 or $50,000 of everyone's money, or the CPC, why all these boards can be appointed, and yet this one shouldn't be. That'll be the first thing. The second is that, you know, you'll have to defend why the will of the voters isn't represented, and the fact that they have re-elected Gary Johnston every time. You know, so you'll have to, you have to make a presentation on why, why, why this would be better, you know, to not have the elected representative, not have that focus on the elected representative.
We can't discuss this with that privately. We can't discuss this publicly.
Because it's not on the agenda.
It's a public comment that's not on the agenda, so don't get too involved in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Chuck is absolutely right.
Keep it simple.
Okay.
Keep it simple.
We're not sidetracking them, but we can't discuss it.
No, no, no.
I don't want to break any...
No problem, no problem.
So you got the ball rolling, we'll take it.
All right. I'll bring the next agenda.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what's going to happen now? It'll be on an agenda.
We'll discuss that.
And then...
So then we can discuss.
Another select board meeting?
Then we can all discuss.
Yeah.
And then I have to present this again?
Once it's an agenda, we can publicly discuss it.
But then do I have to say this again at a meeting?
Not sure. We'll work that out. We'll make, we'll let you know. We definitely will keep you in the loop. But we can't...
And just remember that...
No problem.
The select board, you have the power of 10.
With the power of 10?
The power of 10 is what, 10 signatures, and you can get some...
Yeah, that's a citizen's petition, yes.
It's much less than the other one you got. So if this is...
I'll get more than 10 signatures. Somehow I know how to get signatures.
Yeah, I just feel like, you know...
I just, exactly what I said, I think, one person for so long a period of time, but no problem.
You're saying by law, oh, okay.
No.
Okay. Go home now?
Yeah.
In our time. All right.
Send my dinner.
Thank you. Harold, did you have some things that you wanted to talk about?
This is Harold French from Church Street. Yes. Memorial Day, we're going, we're running out of veterans. Our youth are leaving and not coming back. I got three grandchildren who are either in the military or have been in the military and not coming back, not even coming back to the Northeast. The cost of living has gotten so high, they can't afford to live here. Tourism and second homes are killing us. I mean, look at, look at the percentage of population of Stockbridge, what, 10% full-time homeowners? About 50. Oh, how much? It's a little less than 50. Okay, a little less than that. But, you know, even the doctors are leaving, doctors and nurses, quality of healthcare is going down. People still want to stay here. So we have to change the way we're looking at Memorial Day very soon. I mean, I think the youngest Memorial Day person on the Memorial Day committee is 60-something, and there's no, there's no more of the veterans. So, got to take a different approach to the very near future.
Do you have to be a veteran to be on Memorial Day?
No, no. But the thing is, we don't have the veterans to participate. What if we get the veterans out of this panic department? Help us out. We got to help somebody.
And whoever just addressed your, your, your committee, your board, come up to the rostrum, so we see who this person is, and...
Oh, sure, it's Harold.
Now, you're getting old, man.
I am a, I am a great supporter of everything that Harold puts forth, but I would like to hear this one again, because I did not.
Okay, for Memorial Day, we're running out of veterans to both participate and help to organize. When Rick and I were young, we're young fellows, there'd probably about 30 veterans in the parade. There's not 30 veterans left in town, let alone be in the parade. I bet we can't, we have a hard time finding a dozen veterans. Most of us are all 60 years and over, some are pushing 90. If it wasn't for getting some veterans help, either Houshtonic, BFW, American Legion, we'd have almost nobody for the parade.
I have two comments on that.
Sure.
One is, what would you guys, since we have representatives of both the organizations I'm about to mention in the room, I would love to get your opinion on this. This is literally just popped in my head. What about taking the Memorial Day Parade and figuring out how to partner with the Norman Rockwell Museum, so it's the Norman Rockwell Memorial Day Parade, because the guy was such an Americana guy, and, but that could maybe attract some people.
Tourism is part of our problem.
I don't think tourism is a problem, John.
I agree with Harold.
Yes, it is. I mean, tourism's caused, my, my task, Norman Rockwell himself told me he did not want the museum here in Stockbridge. He wanted to go to Philadelphia to Curtis Publishing. He said, they won't listen to me.
Absolutely agree with Harold.
And...
I'm going to discuss public...
My tax, my taxes have gone for 4,000% since the Rockwell Museum.
We're not talking about taxes. You just told us that you were worried that the parade wouldn't be able to function.
I didn't say that. It would not be able to function with veterans.
Okay.
Patrick, I have a comment we can't debate.
I don't know. But...
Just a reminder.
We don't really have a...
Yeah, that was, that was my concern on that. I mean, they're talking about, even Houshtonic now, they're talking about having the veterans have less participation, because we get, all getting so much older. A lot of the guys can't participate in the parade.
Yeah.
But like I said, second homes and tourists are killing us.
Could be the other question I would have. Well, okay, we'll talk about it. I'll put that one on the agenda too. Memorial Day Parade, we'll do it sometime in March.
Okay, the other thing, I talked, I met with Michael and Hugh Page last, last year about the sidewalk and drainage on Church Street, and we were supposed to have some input on that, and it never happened. The sidewalks were put in without good planning. They're raised anywhere from four to 10 inches. Their blacktop scuppers were put into the cash basins. The water can't get to the cash basin because the sidewalks are blocking them. Every spring I had to put a pump in my front yard because we can't get, we can't use our front door because we've got so much water in it. And those, there's, in front of 45 Church Street, this cash basin's gotta come up about, what, two feet? And there's a tree was planted right next to it, which has gotta go, a linden. It's had, the roots are pushing into the cash basin. The next, next house up, 40, 43 Church Street, there's a linden planted there in the split. It's gonna, one of these days it's gonna be like the one up in front of us, I think it was 27 Church Street that came down the road. It needs to go. The next one up is a maple that was hit by a piece of equipment. It's got a big scar and the tree is rotting. We were gonna have a, supposed to have a hearing, but the, uh, uh, tree warden, it never happened. So these, you know, things have gotta be addressed and things, ball's been dropped. But like on the other side of Church Street, used to be swale and culverts on the driveways. That was all taken out years ago. And the water, like, uh, I can't handle the house right now, but the water backs up, there's something like 10 inches deep because they can't nor get any drainage. Somebody put in a cash basin, which is always just a hole in the ground, but the cash basin let it, no pipe to it. What needs to happen there is the sidewalks gotta go back to, down to where it was. The sidewalks need to follow the terrain of the, of the street. That's where they used to make a runway for, for the jet aircraft. And the drainage is terrible on Church Street, that sidewalk is put in. I think instead of putting new culverts in, I think maybe you need to put some, put the sidewalk down back where it belongs and put in some cash basins.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael will have an announcement sometime in next month, I think, about, uh, thoughts on repairing many roads in town. I think he's used, with all roads in town, he's come up with a plan. So when we're ready to, uh, make it available to the public, we will, but that's coming. So hopefully we'll be able to address these issues as part of that.
We got some more.
Oh.
Okay, uh, the nonprofits in town, many of them have got housing for their employees or whatever. The housing is part of their pay. Shouldn't those houses, the housing be taxed? It's not actually physically part of the nonprofit, it's the housing separate from the museum, whatever, it's housing for their employees.
You mean like railside tax, that it shouldn't be exempt?
Right, they should not be exempt. And there's some of the places, also have businesses running on their property, which are separate from the actual attraction that they're making money on, but not, uh, not paying taxes on. One, uh, nonprofit that does business here in Stockbridge in 2020 had income $70 million with, with expenses and salaries of $20 million. They made $50 million statewide.
You're talking about BSO?
I'm not, I'm not mentioning any names.
Okay.
Okay. But I think they should be paying taxes.
I just don't think that's actually accurate, but okay.
Okay. We're, we're also looking, not Stockbridge, all around the area, we're looking at environmental disaster. Since this now is a monopoly on waste and, um, recycling, the cost has gone upwards of, you know, beyond belief. Shortly after this happened, I went to West Stockbridge and then back to, over to Lee. On the way, I saw five piles of stuff dumped along the side of the road. The people normally recycle or whatever, but they can't do it. I've seen mattresses being chopped up and put in garbage bags, put in our compactor because, how much you think it costs to get rid of a box spring mattress now?
I don't know. Cause I got one in my.
Okay, take a shot.
50 bucks?
You haven't made a down payment. 250. And it's, you know, it's, it's getting out of hand. I mean, they're, they're reaping, reaping the profits. We're, we're, someplace along the line, the towns are gonna be paying the price. I mean, we no longer have hazardous waste pickup. Where's that stuff going? It's getting dumped.
Yeah, but, but we can't control what the new state laws are. What we can do is make sure that we roll out a plan.
Well, you got, you got.
To address what the town's responsibilities are gonna be around, around the transfer station with the change in law around clothing and around mattresses. And we'll do that soon, right?
But, you know, the people, people can't afford it.
What?
It's what we're charged to get rid of the mattress.
Well, you can talk because you're not on this board. So why don't you, if you feel like saying anything about any of these topics, feel free to.
Well, you just said we're coming up. It's, it's. Harold hit it right on the head. There's one outfit now.
Yeah.
That's it.
It's monopoly.
And at the cost of recycling, the cost of trash is gonna continue to accelerate. There's numerous articles about it. There's, I don't know what else to say other than that's, that's the way it's going.
Who's the outfit?
Casella.
Casella, okay.
But it's not just them, it's a consolidation of the market all across the country.
In greed.
That's right.
Okay, one last thing.
Sure.
I ask you to get rid of those dog waste bags that are around town. They're lining our, they're filled and landing our streets. We don't have dog waste bag patrol to go out and pick them up. They're leaving by utility poles, trees, in people's yards. I complained about one day and I came home, I had 16 bags on my front porch. But they're, they're lining.
You call the police? Cause that seems maybe it's personally directed.
But there's, there's, these bags are lining the trails going to Laura's Tower, up to Iceland, even up, up my mountain.
Yeah, I've seen them too.
I mean, we're better off letting the dog waste go on the ground and let nature take care of it and have it in plastic bags all over the place.
Yeah.
And we need to have a, uh, pooper scooper laws, they have them on other towns and enforce it.
And recycling. All right, you've given us like about five agenda items. You made my job very easy, uh, so thank you for that.
All right, that's it.
And, uh, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harold.
Thank you, Harold.
Always a pleasure.
All right. Onto the next thing, we've gotta take action on minutes, October 17th, October 22nd, November 10th, and December 8th. Drive a motion.
Make a motion, we stopped a minute.
I'll make a second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All righty. We'd like to, uh, thank the pilot payment in lieu of taxes, uh, payments from Berkshire Tectonic Foundation for $1,000. Do we know what property that's for?
I think that's pilot payment from, from, just.
Just.
I, I didn't have time.
Okay.
I didn't know what it was for.
So we'll figure it out. Well, somebody pays their bills through, or, or makes their donations through Berkshire Tectonic, and so it's opaque. And the other one is St. Paul's Church, who gave us $500. Thank you, St. Paul's.
Thank you.
All right, nothing to do there. All right, so next we want to have an update discussion. First of all, are all the school committee members here? All right, so we're gonna just change this around a little bit because they just came out of a, a long school committee meeting and then we'll come back to the, uh, the rest of the agenda after we're done. So why don't you all come up? Yeah, I mean, there's just the mics can pick you up, so.
Pull them up to the table.
Just so people can see your lovely, lovely visages.
Stay in that side.
The back of my head. Hi, Jason.
How you doing?
Okay, everyone, this is Peter Dillon, who's the superintendent of schools. This is Jason St. Peter, who's, uh, an elected member of the school committee. And this is Corey Sprague, another elected member of the school committee. This year, no one put their name in for the election we had in November. So consequently, we are short a school committee member. The board that Michael Neistad on statutorily must have a member of the school committee and, uh, these folks don't have time, so, uh, this RSTPB board, so not only do we need this person to be appointed so that we can fulfill the, the needs of the, of the school committee, but also because we're in the middle of, uh, lengthy and sensitive negotiations around the school merger. So that's all I got.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Hello, there's some contact. So what happens when we have a vacancy is the remaining school committee members in, in that town and the select board members in that town jointly appoint, um, somebody to the school committee. This year, we've had, uh, real blessings around who's put their hat in the ring and, and three people have expressed interest in filling the vacancy. So your charge, the five of you, uh, is to pick one of those three people, um, and, and appoint them. What I would like to offer as we start this is, it's really unusual that three people express an interest in doing it.
Especially after nobody ran.
Right.
Anyone could have won with two votes.
And what, what I'd love to do is for the two people who aren't selected to reach out to them and engage them in some other way, uh, which might include, um, an outreach committee that's forming around, uh, the high school project in, in being involved in that, or, um, other opportunities within the district to support other, other work.
Volunteer.
Yeah.
Okay. And who's, just so that we.
And I was thinking that.
Who's, who's gonna have that responsibility of the five of us or seven of us?
What do you mean? Responsibility for?
Reaching out.
Well, I'm happy to reach out to them on behalf of the district to introduce some range of possibilities.
You know what's out there and what.
Right.
What they can look into.
But we also gotta point them to town-related boards too. I mean, I, I think if, if they're, if, uh, I think trying to get, well, people want to try to get involved, I think there was an assumption that nobody wanted to do the job and they would get it.
No, so it's.
Then it turned out to be.
So that's great. So the, the three people who expressed their interest, and I'm saying this for the TV audience, are Bill Voight, who, I mean, obviously he's here, but they're all Stockbridge residents, right? And, and he has a background in, in finance and has been, uh, involved, uh, in, uh, in local nonprofit on their board. Uh, and then there's Sarah Tenetti, who interestingly also has a background in finance and has been involved in a, in a small entrepreneurial company, uh, in, um, in Great Barrington. She also has kids in the schools. Uh, and the third person is Joanna Linsky, uh, and her background is, uh, in farming and horticulture, uh, and she has, I believe, one, one student in, in the school. So all really interesting backgrounds, all have a lot to contribute. Uh, you've reviewed either their resumes or letters expressing their interest and, and I leave it to you in terms of process, how, how you wanna have a, a conversation and then, and then get to a vote. Is that okay? Set it up that way?
We're fine. So do you have any opinions yourselves, uh, on, I think they're all great candidates. I know Joanna, I don't, I don't know, uh, Sarah, Sarah, yeah. Uh, but I, I, I do know Bill, obviously. And I, I, uh, obviously Sarah comes recommended, uh, all three are very good candidates.
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we can go wrong. I think all three are great. I really appreciate all of them putting their, their name in or hat in the ring, so to say. You know, Sarah was the first one to reach out to me or to the, the district when it was, um, uh, known that there wasn't gonna be a candidate. And, um, you know, she's not involved in any town board, she wants to be, so, um, uh, I don't know Joanna or Bill, uh, I don't know Sarah very well, but, um, um, just with her background, her, uh, work background, uh, the amount of time she's lived in town, kids in the district, not serving on any boards, I think it's, um, I am leaning towards Sarah. I, I feel Sarah would be the strongest choice, just, A, I think Bill would be a great choice, but he's already on board, he's served, and just trying to get more people involved, especially younger people, people who've been in town for a while. I think, um, if we can spread out the, um, the workload, um, I think that would be a positive and, um, um, I just think she would be, uh, my choice out of three excellent candidates.
So, yeah, I mean, I think, I, I tend to agree. I think having a financial background is important, especially in light of a lot of the things that are going on right now. We're lucky that two of the candidates have that. Um, being, um, having served now for several years and having had kids go through the district and having kids in the district actively, while it's certainly not a prerequisite, um, I think it's, um, added a dimension to my role and I think it's very helpful. And so I would also lean towards putting Sarah in this position, but I would strongly, um, encourage the two others to be getting involved at the district level in other ways. I think that both would have a lot to offer.
What do you guys think?
I would be more can think of with, uh, Bill Volk. I think his, you know, finance background, being on finance committee, he has the definite pulse on the town's finances. When we stand and the biggest thing coming up, the next thing is finance, is money, it's the schools, it's the buildings. I think he's got the background that would really help us out with that. So I would put my vote for Volk.
Well, that's my vote, yeah.
Just, that's what I'm recommending, Volk.
And Jamie, do you have thoughts on?
Thoughts. So I appreciate all three people coming forward. I think that's amazing, you know, civic engagement. Um, I was, um, I read them all over and thought about it. So I'm leaning towards Bill because, um, he has the time, he has experience with committee work, he has financial experience. Um, Sarah's also interesting, um, but I know she's, it's, you know, seems like she has children, she's busy, but, I mean, that doesn't negate that she couldn't do it. So those are sort of my thoughts right now.
Okay, uh, so my turn. Um, I feel strongly in general that we should try to bring more folks into government. Uh, we've, we've worked real hard in the past three years. I think, uh, Chuck and Roxanne before Jamie and, and now this board has worked really hard to actually bring, uh, a number of, uh, I think we're up to about 20 folks who weren't in government, uh, when I, but before I was elected, that we tried to bring, you know, tried to make it a bigger, a bigger, uh, you know, uh, universe. That said, uh, I know that the merger with South Berkshire is, could go, you know, it's, it's, uh, rock, paper, scissors, just see whether it's gonna happen. You know, let's face it, some of them don't like it, we're not sure where the numbers are, uh, up here. Uh, it, it's been attacked in many different quarters, but there's also a pretty good chance it may happen. And the, the, um, uh, the board has agreed to put forth as part of that proposal, a much smaller school committee than this, two school committees have now. So there would be three representatives from Great Barrington, two from Sheffield, and one from all the other six towns. So I see this as potentially a caretaker position in terms of like, you know, you're, the, you two and whoever we appoint will have to decide where the merger to go forward, if any of you want to serve, and if so, which one, or you can run against each other. But, you know, the reality is that we're potentially going into a, a, a different kind of school committee coming in, uh, in 2024. And that's not very far away. This is, you know, you know, two years away. So I personally feel that, um, I don't know much about how this school committee functions. You guys, you do your meetings on the same night as mine. I love going to town meetings, yours is the one I've never been to. So, uh, but what I do know, because I've been to about 100 hours of it, is what the regional school district planning board meetings are. And I'll tell you, like, for somebody who doesn't come from an educational background, who's been on that board for a couple of years now, it is like mind-numbing, the kind of, the range of decisions that are being made. And, and I have often, to be candid, felt like I wasn't qualified to be in the room to make that decision, uh, other than we have a consultant and, you know, you don't wanna have a consultant, but when we start talking about educational quality or whatever, you know, uh, I mean, uh, you know, these are like, you know, I mean, they're really nuanced things. So, but right now, luckily, most of the people at RSTPB have more experience than me on a lot of those educational kind of school district issues. The one thing I, I have a fair amount of experience with is finance, as does Bill. And, uh, and there's a lot to miss there. I mean, for example, what will be the agreement, if any, around what's the, what is the trigger for a school closure for some of these elementary and middle schools in South Berkshire? You know, what are, what is the, um, if we're going to start off trying to make sure that there's not a giant jump in South Berkshire budgets because, uh, it's politically untenable, uh, the initial proposal was that that would go on forever. We pushed back pretty hard on that, Michael Canales and I, um, and didn't make a lot of friends in some of those southern towns, uh, who are also on that board. But I can't see us, you know, pay more than others forever. I could see why it makes sense if we want to merge it.
Getting off track a little bit.
No, no, I'm just, I'm making, I'm moving up to the. We have RSTPB.
Okay, I know.
And, and I'm sorry, Chuck, this is really important stuff.
It is, it is very important.
This, this decision around, around the school merger is the biggest financial decision the town will make likely in our lifetimes. I mean, let's face it, it's like 40, what, 40% of the budget every single year? And, and having kind of the folks, uh, I, I think that finance is really the most important thing we have to, um, we have to go with. Yes, Jeff?
Rich. Wait, wait, wait. I got, I got.
John.
Rich Bradley, 92 East Main Street. Uh, I was on the school committee for five or six years. One thing I just want to remind you of is that it's not the town of Stockbridge that elects the school committee. I understand that. Hold on.
Hold on, John.
It's the three towns of the district that votes on the school committee.
It'll be the eight towns in the new agreement.
I'm just saying that, I, I just want to point out that there, right now, the school committee members are elected by the three towns. So a school committee member does not necessarily represent just the town in which that person lives, but has to serve all three towns that are on the school committee. I just want to point that out. The reason why I bring this up is that in the five, six years that I was on the school committee, I was on a board with other people who held positions on other boards in their town.
Right.
And it was my personal perspective that those people were holding agendas specific to their town. I don't besmirch any of their credibility or what their agendas were, but I do know that from a motive standpoint, they were bringing their own town motives to the.
And you don't think closing an elementary school in New Marlboro might fall into that category? That's my exact point.
I'm just saying that when you have people who are certain.
Hello.
Boards on the town.
John, what is wrong with you? Can you, can you wait your turn to talk, please?
Wait just a minute, wait just.
Oh, I'm not going to wait a minute. I will shut down, I will shut down your audio if you can't wait to hear your turn to speak. I want this meeting.
The students have something.
And you're going to talk.
The students have something.
Close it down.
John, please just be cordial and respectful.
All I was trying to point out is that when you appoint someone on the school committee, they are representing all three towns on the current district. I'm not talking about what the new district might be.
It's the same way. Everyone votes.
So I just, but that the perspective of an individual sitting on the school committee has to be somewhat non-biased to the degree of representing all three towns. That's my point. That's all I wanted to say.
Having, having said that, though, that is not the same as the Regional Student School District Planning Board.
I get that.
Specifically.
You are reading someone out right now. Your task is to bring someone out to the current school committee.
Yeah, well, maybe you don't realize, but Jason is heading up the new Mountain Committee, and Cory has a whole lot of responsibilities already and are not, don't feel they have the time to fill this really critical role. And so the person that we appoint is actually going to also, right away, be appointed by Gary Johnson, who is the appoint authority for it, to the RSCPB.
I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I'm not, I'm not questioning what their responsibility is. I'm just pointing out that whomever you appoint represents all three towns in the current position.
That was helpful to me.
On the school committee, yes, okay. Good.
No.
John, did you want to say something? We might have heard you murmured.
No, I mean, the one thing that I really have to say to you is, is that this whole thing, this whole merger and everything else involves the students. And it's, should be somebody's job to go out there and poll the students as to how they feel about it. This is what we're really dealing with. We're not dealing with tax.
Oh, can I do this one?
Where's that?
Oh, you can.
We don't have to deal with it. It's not part of this conversation.
Come on, John, of course we're doing that.
Pay into the conversation.
Those, we've had many, many discussions with the, at the planning board with actual students. It is in the record. We do it through community outreach and the entire board. There's 24 board members here. We've got to keep busy, right? You know, it's like.
And there's a really robust website.
Yeah.
That details three years' worth of work.
Well, good enough track here. Let's get back onto.
This is, this is all part of the, I specifically put RSCPB in as an agenda item. You know, so I, I think that because this person has to fill both roles, it's kind of important that we understand both what the challenges are right now that we're going to face here. That's all. And I'm not in a hurry. So, you know, we can talk for a little bit. If anyone has anything to say.
That's easy. Later, you guys.
All right, thank you. So do we have a, so what do you, are you, obviously the three of us will lean toward Bill. And it took me maybe five minutes longer than them to say so. I acknowledge that. Can you, can you see the, that, I mean, it's not one's better than the other, but can you see the rationale for why I think it's important?
I kind of need the help, and I think that he's the strongest candidate coming from the finance committee to help me on the, on the other board.
I mean, like I said before, I mean, I think that all three of them are good, and I think we'd be well-served by any one of them. So if that's where you're leaning, I mean, and we put it to a vote, I'm not going to get in the way of that. I'm just adding the fact, I do agree with Rich that I think the more kind of hats you're wearing, it can get more complicated and more confusing, certainly. It can also be a benefit because you're seeing the whole picture. And I just go back to the, to the idea that, that having kids in the district, I think has been an important piece of my tenure.
Like having parents with kids in, on the school committee. Yeah, and, and obviously both do have schools, kids in the schools now, right?
I do.
Okay. Are you thinking of having any more children, Bill?
And like I said, it's not a prerequisite. It's not necessary. But if, as we look at the, the greater composition of our board, there are fewer and fewer members that, that fit that. So it's something personally that I was looking at kind of as we, as we added. But no doubt, and I make, you know, I completely agree that having somebody with a, with a strong finance background is going to be important going forward.
Yeah, well, especially the next four months. I mean, I think the most important part of, of, well, once again, I'm biased because that's, this is the one I'm on. But this is going to town meeting in May. I mean, there's a lot of work still left to do and a lot of huge decisions. This could be $300,000, $400,000, you know, either way. And if Chip Witzler gets his way, it could be $400,000 either way. I mean, it's like, you know, you've got, you've got really substantive decisions that have to be made. And, and, you know, we've got to make sure that the entire finance committee is briefed and on board with, with whatever strategy Michael and I come up with. And it's just, and by the way, we're not, it's not like we couldn't find someone else to do that board. Statutorily, it has to be a school committee member. So it has to be, you know, we, you know, it's one of the three of you. And, okay, so do we have a motion?
Motion to vote?
Yeah, why not?
I'll make a motion.
You want to keep talking? I can keep talking.
Make a second.
What?
I make a second.
You said Bill vote?
Because we make motion to take the vote.
And I seconded it.
So we can vote.
I'm offering, I don't need a motion to take the vote.
I, I would vote for Bill Volk.
Actually, you want to make a motion to appoint Bill Volk to the open school committee seat?
Yes.
I second.
Okay. All those are favored.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes last.
Opposed.
Opposed.
I'm going to go with Bill. So pass this through to you. Thank you. And, 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 yeah, thank you. It's, it was a tough choice. I think we've got.
It was a tough choice.
Yeah, we've got Joanna is a wonderful lady and has a, what, a four-year-old? I mean, we're, you know, it's a, it's a, yeah.
And thank you.
Yes, thank you, Bill, for, thank you, Joanna and Sarah, for all of you volunteering your time, unpaid time.
I'm sure. I don't think we can go wrong.
So if it's okay with everybody, I'll reach out to.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sarah and Joanna and ask them to be involved in some other.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
All right, thanks. Consensus. Okay. Okay, then. Let's now talk about an update discussion of issues related to the Stockbridge Muncie abandoned Mohegan's. Rick and Rich, you should come up to the, to the table and we can have a little conversation. There's a number of open issues I just wanted to address.
Have to behave yourself.
I think you look good there. I think you should be over this side.
I wouldn't go there.
Get out some papers for your down the road.
All right, so the first thing I just want to do, I can just, this is an announcement, but the, the tribe has indicated a desire to have a formal ceremony to transfer the documents. And so we're working with, I don't believe we've reached out yet to the, to our state rep and our state senator or potentially former governor Baker who signed the law or the current governor, just because she might want to kind of have something good to say, who knows? But, but we're going to try to put together a formal event for the purpose of, of, you know, a ceremony to transfer the documents sometime in February, I think, or March, or, we don't know yet.
I hadn't heard a date.
Okay, all right. The Paul Mark one was in February, that's right. I hadn't heard a date yet either. So that's the first thing is, you know, we're proceeding. Rick, you're ordering boxes. I didn't realize the Indian proprietor records were so big.
Not, not terribly big, but I think Monique wants to be sure that when she, she comes to research they conduct Wisconsin, that she has appropriate archival boxes to put the documents in.
After all this, make sure it has one of those little handcuffs on it.
I think so. The briefcase with the handcuffs. Sounds good.
All right. Okay, so that's the first thing. Anything else there that we need to talk about?
I don't think so. Pretty straightforward.
The second thing is, I wanted to just give everyone a quick update because we've been working on some erroneous information related, related to the Indian Burrow ground. And I wanted to update everyone on what we found out, mostly through Rick's hard work, or what he hasn't found out, if that's, that might be more, yeah, more of the point. When I was on Laurel Hill billboard, we thought we owned the Indian Burrow ground. In fact, I think that they maintained it for many years, and it was less than our property. She, and it turned out we didn't. And then that was because the town owned the Indian Burrow ground. And so for the last five or 10 years, you know, the town has owned the Indian Burrow ground until it didn't. You know, there was a guy named Oliver Partridge, one of, one of your ancestors, as I understand it, who, who died without being married and children. So there, he had brothers and sisters, though, or cousins and a lot of them. And so what we find is now there's no known owner of the parcel. Now, that's not the worst thing for the town because it gets the town off the hook a little bit because, you know, for us to take it over from, you know, it, it, it doesn't, there's no natural reason for us to be in the center of this transaction other than to provide leadership, okay? And, and, and so we, Rick and I had a chance to talk to a lawyer this week, Lori Hoffman, who's a real estate lawyer. Oh, hi, Lori, Lori Robbins, I said Hoffman. And Lori is, can talk a little bit about this, but the challenge of tracking down all the heirs and getting them to quick their claim is daunting. Does, what do you think, Lori? There's maybe 50 or 100 heirs who might have a claim to the land?
We couldn't possibly know, but Rick Wilcox emailed me the deed dated 1809 and reported it in 1811. That is delightful to read, but it does quit claim unto Oliver Partridge for him to maintain this property. And if he died without deeding it to anyone, as Rick's research has indicated, then his heirs own it. Tracking down the heirs from 1809 to the present for 214 years would be a daunting task. And if you have heirs, you'd have to probate their estate. So we discussed brief B. I indicated there are causes of action called action to quiet title whereby a plaintiff who alleges they have a superior interest in the real estate can bring an action in the Superior Court against the last known owner of the real estate, and that would be Oliver Partridge. So he would be known as the defendant, and the action tries to extinguish his interest as well as anybody else who can claim under him, all of his heirs. Then presuming the plaintiffs prevail in that and heirs don't show up and say, no, 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 we own it, we want to defend this action, we want to continue to own this property, then the court would award ownership of this to the named plaintiff. What we need to talk about and do some further research on is who would be that named plaintiff? Who can allege that they've used it, occupied it for more than 20 years, which is a statutory requirement?
Oh, the people buried there could. That's why I would say the Stockbridge Muncies.
So that's, that, I believe the ultimate goal is to get the land back to the Stockbridge Muncie Indian Tribe. So they would be a good choice to have as the plaintiff.
But they're out of state and they're a separate nation. And so one of the things we talked about was maybe having a local partner who had done some of the maintenance of the land. It could be Laurel Hill, it could be the golf course. Somebody like that be an interim to partner with the tribe. So maybe we name both of them with the idea being, or even a pre-agreement to ensure that as the, the day that that, you know, gets, gets quiet, quiet title, gets affected, affected, that, that the land is then transferred to the tribe. Now, so that's half that story, I think, right? It's basically how we as a town might go about transferring that parcel that it turns out we don't own. So, you know, but having to transfer to the Stockbridge Muncies. The other half of that project, though, is that, that they've expressed a desire to have a local partner in case of, in case of, you know, vandalism or other criminal activity were to take place. You know, they are always concerned about people trying to dig up and look for artifacts or whatever. And, and so the other part of that is, is looking for a local agent. Obviously, the town's not in the local agent business per se, not saying we could be, though we might not be able to be. And so we've been talking with some of the local Stockbridge nonprofits about playing that role, basically being the like local eyes and ears and, you know, Stockbridge Land Trust and Laurel Hill. I cannot find who the current chair of the golf course is. I was looking up. I was looking the other day and then got onto something else. But I do think, I do think that we're going to need, I don't, I don't believe, talking to Monique, that they will accept the Indian Burrow ground until we find a partner for them who can be the local administrator, if you will. And I don't think there's a lot of work to that. I think it's literally like, if somewhere to like, you know, spray paint the monument or something. I mean, I don't know. It's hard to say, but we're going to have to figure that part out as well. And they have specifically tasked figuring that out with the town representatives, not, rather than, you know, rather than wanting to kind of be that involved in this election. So. Any questions on that one? It's really exciting.
It is a very exciting project, and I'd like to offer our services. I have a new associate working with me, Grace Enchil. She's on the Zoom as well, and she's very excited to work on this. We'd be glad to donate our services pro bono to assist with this, this piece of litigation.
The whole thing? Because you were talking about 10 grand the other day. I mean, that, that was going to be the cost.
Could be. Well, there's, there's expenses, and we would not front the expenses, but we would do the legal work for free.
Okay, so two cents for a copy? I think that the, you know, how, how much paper do we need for transferring, transferring one little tiny little deed over?
Who's funding the expenses? We can't legally, I don't believe.
Look, I, look, one of the things I think that we should do, and Michael, maybe you can reach out to Donigan and answer this, I would like to see a CPC application for this project, for this cycle, that would be, that would fund a few thousand dollars to kind of help figure it out. It could come out of administrative funds. It could come out of the, the general thing. I think this is a really important one, and if we can't do CPC, I'll, I'll make a motion that we take a thousand dollars out of ARPA and call it Canadian Relations or something, you know? We'll, we'll spin it.
I don't think we can do that.
I think we can come up with a way that we, this government has an interest in a relationship with the Stockbridge Muncies, and this government now knows that it does not own a parcel, and that no one does, and it's one of the most historic and important parcels in town. I think we have an interest in resolving this, and that's the argument I would make in front of the, you know, the district attorney from wherever, wherever charged. Yeah. Yep. It would be nice to know what said expenses would be, to understand what order of magnitude you're talking about. Beyond the legal, which is being given as pro bono, but the fees and other expenses would be interesting. It would be great to know what those expenses are because that could be something local organizations could get behind to support, including, including the one that I represent.
Sure people will donate.
So do we see any other expenses besides the, the expenses around legal are kind of what we're talking about? I wasn't, I was, my comments were based on, I wasn't aware that there would be any other expenses.
Can you come up with an estimate for the expenses that you won't cover?
Yeah, well, there's a filing fee, there's a GAL who gets appointed, who does a report to the court. There's newspaper advertisement, so there's actual expenses associated with an action to quiet title.
Can you come up with an estimate for that and give us that? Then we could take it from there.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
12,000.
Okay. I think we'll get donations for that one issue.
I, I, knowing that, I don't think it's terrible. I think those things could be managed.
We can examine what we can and cannot do.
Without involving towns.
I just need to know what the number is, and I can start talking to others.
Too, because Chuck, just so you know, it's our assumption that the town is getting out of the business of the Indian Burrow ground. That's, and I don't.
Yeah, yes, definitely. 100% behind that. Just want to make sure we're not illegal, illegally using town money to do it.
Yeah, I think we should do it appropriately so that we don't.
Well, we have to.
Oh, yes, definitely.
We all know we have to. If it's illegal, we're not going to do it. If there's a way to do it and there wasn't other money to get it done, I would support that, but I don't make this, you know, we'd have to support that together. So, yeah. The third thing that I'm not sure we're ready to talk about, what do you think on the three-person thingy?
You have a better field.
Yeah, but I mean, the idea, since we've talked about it, I think it's good for, for the, for the, for the entire board to know about it. I feel like we should consider having a Stockbridge Muncie liaison committee that, who would be townspeople, who would be sort of tasked with the. be sort of tasked with the, with working through issues like this. I think that we're, the, the presence of the tribe is increasing. Uh, this is the former capital, if you will. It's like kind of the, you know, ground zero of what this, this, uh, this, um, you know, renewal looks like. And, uh, and I think that it's important that, um, you know, I probably had a dozen, two dozen conversations with tribal representatives since I've been elected and decisions should be made in public and they should be, they should have boards that are empowered by the town to, uh, to have public meetings and come up with things that are in the town's interest and the tribe's interest. And we have lots of good people who I think would participate in a, in a, in a board like that. And I, and I want to kind of get out of the, you know, selection who might have shown the most interest in the topic kind of thing, frankly. So, uh, this is nothing we've decided now. It's simply a, a decision we can make at town meeting, similar to what we did for Stockbridge, uh, both stewardship commission. We just write the bylaw. We, we don't, and then it becomes something that we appoint. Uh, but then they're, then they're subject to open meeting law and they, they've got agendas and people can participate and volunteer and it becomes more structured and formal. And I think we need that.
I like that. It should be off dislectments. They should come to us with their findings.
Yeah.
And should be involved in the beginning to the end. It should be.
Agriculture and forestry has worked great. You know, when, when, uh, you know, I haven't been able to be in, in the forest with Bob Levert when he pointed out the problems we had, you know, and, and it wasn't, it wouldn't have been appropriate for it to be me be the lead on that. So we resurrected the agriculture and forestry commission and those guys have done a great job managing those issues. And I think it's like, I think that's a really model for how we can kind of
I think we should look into that. Yes.
All right. So, uh, we'll, uh, we'll work on that.
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
Well.
The only thing I would ask, just because there's a little bit of tact involved with this, is that I would invite you to have a conversation with the folks at the Stockbridge Muncy Community to under, to let them know that this is an intent that the town is wanting, thinking about proceeding and doing and creating this committee.
Yeah.
So that they feel comfortable with this type of arrangement. Right now their arrangement is to talk to the select board directly and that presents a certain optic that I think is a little different than having an interim group. So I would just invite you to just have a conversation with, with the folks at, you know,
Definitely.
To make sure that they're
They don't like it, it's not going to fly.
Right. If they don't feel comfortable with that, that may not necessarily make anything better. So that's only anything I would invite you to do.
Definitely.
I mean, this would be a more working toward this left. I get it, but it is an interesting question. Of course, we would always take their calls and say, the question is, is there's work, there's work. And then there's sort of, you know, you know, having a quote eagle or, you know, signing the thing at the ceremony. I mean, you know, we need more workers and, yeah.
I, I get that and I understand the potential and opportunity for, for having this, but I just also know that
Right.
It takes two to tango and you need to make sure that both parties are
And you saw, I think I see, 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 you, you saw the memo on this topic I wrote
Maybe you'll go.
Two days ago. I did not hear back. Did you hear back today? I was in this afternoon.
Uh, but I think you, one of your colleagues wanted to say something.
I just wanted to say, I had that thought also, Rich, about that, that they should be comfortable because they may think a board or a committee may be down, like then stepping down, like instead of having, coming to the select board. Um, so, yeah.
We're a town, they're a nation. So if anyone's stepping down, it's, uh, or stepping up, it's us. I mean, but whatever. Rick?
Uh, just so that you should be aware that they have a different governing structure than
Than we have.
Here. Um, and I think it's a little bit more complicated. So, um, you know, you need to approach.
Tenderly.
I don't know who you need to approach.
You know, but gently.
Why don't you do it? Why don't you do it?
Wait, there is a protocol with respect. And so
Yeah, it really
It's not just up to the local people that are here to represent them. So
So it comes Okay. But, but you, hold on one second. This isn't representing the Stockbridge Muncy Community. This is representing the town's interaction with the Stockbridge Muncy Community. Cause right now, I'll tell you how it happens. I get a call. You know, maybe some of you get them. I don't know what calls you get. I get a lot of calls. Not a lot, but at least several dozen in my tenure here on, of wide variety of topics, probably a hundred emails. You know, we've had many.
Yeah.
And, and we started to make little decisions and it's not, it's not a, it's not a perfect, it's not the optimal way, optimal way to, to have towns make decisions. Cause none, none of us are really empowered to making decisions outside this meeting. So
And I'm not discrediting anything that you're saying. I'm just simply saying that I invite you to talk to the, to tribe
Of course.
And understand that it's, it's that, that conversation.
Yeah. It's two different worldviews and you need to be careful where you, where you go.
Okay.
But how should we go forward then? Uh, cause you know me, I'm, I kind of say, what's on my mind in that about 300 words more than that. So, uh, would one of you be a better? I have no problem with if, if this is one that you have an interest in, uh, or one of you guys are going to point Rich and Rick to.
I'm not a town resident, so I think I'm not able to do that, but
We're going to point out town residents.
Okay. But, I mean, I guess I would suggest
Any starter to cancel a conversation about it? Just bring it up saying, so what we're thinking? Just to get in their heads.
Well, I have a sense of what will happen is that the request will be that if you want to do that, you want to work with a group from the Stockbridge Muncy Community that you formally request from the Board of Selectmen, you formally request that to the Tribal Council and then it all filters down, however it filters down. But I think in terms of protocol, you have to be very careful to, to go through Tribal Council for anything.
And remember, they wouldn't have any decision-making authority. It would, it would be, it would, they would be bringing decisions to select board. And maybe it could be that it's a six-person committee, three members of the tribe lower than the Tribal Council and three members that we appoint who can do the day-to-day stuff. I don't know. We got to think about it, but
It's that, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not a good idea. All I'm saying is in terms of protocol, if you don't do it
It's the right way.
Lord Selectman, two Tribal Council, it will not, it will not go anywhere. So.
It turns out there's people in this town who sometimes agree with you that I have bad ideas. You know, I don't know. I saw some of that this past year. Uh, yeah. So don't worry about it. I'm just, I'm just trying to do what we can to strengthen the
I'm not discrediting the idea.
Let's think about it.
But Rick brings up a good point. You have to, you have to meet it at the right place.
You know, it may be, it may turn out to be a wonderful idea and very helpful. I just, again, it's, it's, it's two groups that govern differently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's
Excellent.
Bake this a little bit.
All right. We'll let this one bake a little. So maybe in early February, we can, I mean, I, I wrote the memo to Monique and Bonnie. And so I'm sure they're kind of figuring out, uh, they're very deliberative, uh, what, what they might, how they might want to respond. And so let's circle back maybe the first week in February and kind of see where we are on that one.
Makes sense.
All right. Thanks. Anything else on the Stockbridge Muncys? Anyone? Any public comment? Thank you for coming, Lori. And Lori, what's your, what's your friend's name?
Thank you for your offer.
Grace Arlo Enchil. She's a new member of the bar and a member of my firm. So she's excited.
All right. Congratulations.
Good evening.
Nice to meet you.
Where do you go to law school?
Suffolk University.
All right. Boston. We love Boston. Right up Beacon Hill. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Until later.
All righty.
Okay. We're gonna, we're, I think that we are, um, we're going to talk about, uh, community preservation funding priorities for the select board. If you guys have any that you guys want to talk about, or Michael or anybody wants to talk about CPC. We did that last year and so I added it this year. Uh, you know, it was on one of Roxane's agendas. I thought it was a good idea for everyone to have a chance to weigh in.
One, one idea you just expressed is making allowance for this transaction with the, with the Indians to cover the costs.
I think we can, once we know the cost, I think we can get private funding for it. If not, we'll look into that, but I think we'll look at private funding first.
Thing is that the, the CBC deadline is February 10th. So, you know, everything just, everything just takes time. And we're already on January 12th and, uh, and someone's got to write the proposal for that if there's a proposal.
We could put it on there, finalize them out if we can to use that money.
Right. The question would be whether or not the town can apply for funds on behalf of somebody else. No, we, but then we work with them to have them do the application. It's fine. Uh, you know, I mean.
I think we could put it in the works, but then if we get the private funding, we withdraw it.
Yeah, of course. And, uh, and, and
It's still covered both ends.
You know, I, look, I, I feel like sometimes we, we always understand the reasons we can't do something and we get to know. And, and on some things, you know, this is like a, they want it back and if we can figure it out, and I think it's a big deal. Their ancestors are buried there. And I think we work a little harder and we figure out a way to get to yes.
I got no issue with it. I think if it's a few thousand dollars, I think you have no issue raising
Yeah.
Private funding from, you know, these nonprofits and everything too. So.
All right. So that's just not left us. Um, okay. And, uh, and, uh, so on CBC, that's one idea. Um, uh, Nicole mentioned the water slide idea. Is a CPC potentially? Uh, she, she talked to me about it. Um, is Katie working on that still?
She's, we're trying to furnish up the open space plan.
Right. If we're going to go after a park grant, do it. So just to let you know, it's a, uh, it's a CPC. What wants to consider putting in a wa, that water thing, oh, not a water slide. You're talking
That was our part. Sorry.
That's, that's a half a million to $750,000 project, the one you're referring to. So, yeah, a lot of water, a lot of controls.
Yeah. I think it'd be great. Be great to have.
Can, can it include a, um, a skating rink?
Finish the, uh, what do we, we gotta finish the open, what is it?
So if we want to go after park funds, which, and the, the ones that have been put in have been supported by park funds in the Berkshires, um, which you could get up to potentially half a million dollars for the project is you have to have an open space recreational.
We don't have that yet.
We didn't. We were beginning, we started work. It stopped. It started up again and then we, our planner left for another position.
But you're trying to replace her, right?
So what do we need?
Not, not at this point.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
So, well, the, 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 when I originally went to the planning board, I discussed that there were three ways. We, we either could not use the planner. We could use the planning board money for specific tasks. So hire somebody to do a specific task or just have a planner here once a week. Uh, the planning board decided to have somebody here once a week, but in the end, I don't think it worked out that well. Um, my recommendation now, cause we had in our contract that if the planner that was assigned to us left, that we could, um, not continue with the contract. So what I think we should do is if we're going to do an open space recreation plan, we contract instead of just for a planner generic for that specific. So I'd have to go to the planning board first. So there's steps here. Cause that money was appropriated to the planning board.
Oh, we could use our money. I mean, honestly, I
All right. We'll just, we'll use
No, I'm not saying that we, we shouldn't do that, but I think that she wants, I think that Kate wants to use some of the planning board money for David Cameron to help with the LPOD.
So this only happened in the last
I mean, that's not her, that's not the whole board either. Yeah.
Okay. So it only happened in the last, just in the last few weeks that Carol left and now we're making decisions. We need to make some decisions on, and I was going to bring it up under ARPA about whether we wanted to fund open space plan there.
Right.
What's the cost of that doing that roughly?
Um, you're
What's rough?
Fifteen, twenty grand.
There's a couple, there's a couple
Fifteen, twenty grand? Yeah.
Approach it. Right. Yeah. It depends on how comprehensive you want the plan to be and the rest and community involvement and everything.
So having this
I'm going to reach out to the BSC group and see about if they do it.
I thought BRPC was the one that, you know, that, then somebody else, then we get a grant to pay for it too.
Wait, I'm lost.
According to Lennox, uh, you know, we can get a grant to pay for the, this, this work if we use our regional planner. Uh,
Okay.
Just something, not, once again, that's the most important thing anyway. There's some grant that for this one, that Mary Beth Mitz insists, uh, there's a grant for, for writing your, updating your, uh, your, uh, open space plan if you use your regional planning.
So if we get this open space plan done
It may be wrong.
We can go for all kinds of grants.
Yes. There are, there are, a lot of grants are contingent on having these plans.
For the fifteen, twenty grand out of ARPA would pay for itself.
Right. And we can, and we can look at Berkshire Regional Planning and to look at other groups and just, right, if you use the planning
Because
Certain things, they might have, they might have grants. Yes.
Does this fall into the ARPA of using that money to make future money, which would be the grants and stuff?
Right.
So it'll
Yeah.
Snowball into more money. If
Yeah.
With that, we're dead in the water, correct? Parents grants without having an open
Uh, certain grants. If the grants require an open space recreational plan, you don't have one currently, then you're ineligible.
Probably most of them.
Is there a way to get a list of all of these kind of, you know, buckets of money that require us to do something? Because MVP had some and we kind of got into it sort of happenstance. I mean, they pushed us a little bit. Um, certainly this one, this one, the genesis of this one was, you know, discussions with the trustees about how if they needed some money, could we, or did we have this in place so that we could apply for these two grants? So we said, no. And you were already working on it. You already understood that. I know. But, you know, uh, Mary Beth Mitz and Randy and I met on the, on some affordable housing trust fund stuff. And it turns out there's certain types of housing production plans that must be in place to get state and HUD grants. And, and I just want to make sure we kind of are getting these things on the shelf if we need them because, you know, some of the stuff could be, in case obviously of housing, it could be millions of dollars.
So Bill, you're finding us, if we invest 20,000 to do that, to get a $500,000 grant, is that a good investment?
Yeah, I'd say that's not bad.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's an option.
That's on the expenses.
Let's
I, I, you know, 20 versus 500. Yes. I don't know anything about any of the rest of this.
So let's look into all our options and getting that done.
Right.
But we gotta get it done. One way or another, let's get it done. I know. Take your time. Do what you gotta do, but let's, it's on the table. Let's, do what we have to do to get it done. We need that.
I, I was told, I actually was told that the, uh, that the, the water slide was like a 25 or 50,000 dollar project. I think the woman who told me that had no idea what it would take to do one. So, uh, yeah. So that, that obviously we're taking that off the table for
I know it's
Self-funding.
Oh, yeah. I was at the meeting when, when, um, you're, she proposed it and we had done a similar one in North Adams with the same type of discharge, not recycling chlorate, chlorinating.
Definitely will be a self-funding project.
Yeah.
This is, this is not a small project. No.
Okay. Um, and CPC, I don't think there's, there's a number of CPC projects that we still have to complete on the town side. So I don't know of any large scale, um, projects. We'll have the normal Bullard Woods one. Uh, we're putting in one for, um, for the, with the conservation, we'll be putting in one to plant trees, uh, down at the, uh, transfer station and highway garage right along. So we clean up that, the area's been nicely cleaned up, but set back and plant some nice row of trees so that that whole area gets cleaned up. So working on that with the Conservation Committee. But yeah, Patrick, put this on there. Just to know if there's something specifically that the select board wanted to go after.
I think we should clean up what we got.
But the only caveat I'll give you is that with the excellent work that, uh, we did last year and that Cheryl has, no Cheryl, no, Eric has been doing it, right? Yeah. Has done to kind of balance the books. We have $913,000 to spend this year. And it's because we had a whole lot of clawbacks of projects that had either never been finished or never gotten off the ground or whatever. And so, you know, we just want to kind of,
um, But can't we roll that money forward?
They can.
Like a bigger project?
They can if they want to. The argument against that is that this, the town voted for CPC. The state gives us the 3% match for CPC and we've had a lot of money. We, we didn't know about all of it, but for years we've had a lot of that. You know, we have a responsibility to invest in the community with CPC and, and, uh, you know, it's not supposed to kind of sit in the town's bank account. You know, that's the argument anyway. You know, that's the argument anyway.
So I'll, I'll make an argument here, Patrick, that once again, this has only come up in the last, last year, some of, some was found. And then as we did a deeper dive into the books, got everything balanced, confirmed with the auditors, once again, you're talking something that just happened a month ago.
Right.
So I understand where you're coming from, but it's like all of a sudden
It wasn't a month ago. It's just fourteen months ago, I did it with Ray. I, I did a, I did an initial one that where we found five or $600,000 and CBC didn't want to spend any of it. You know, cause they didn't, I think at the time they couldn't believe it, but you know, it, it's
So once again, we've confirmed that the money's there. We should, once again, cause I believe CPC is asking to set up a plan to get a production, a community
Right.
preservation plan, so that they plan on how to use this money and how most efficiently to use it, instead of just sounding like we have money, we have to give it away.
Yeah. And I think it's prudent to like use it prudently and to think it through. And what if there's a giant project we want to do? Then we have money.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have a, the, the repair for pine woods is gonna come in at about a million dollars. And it's a, and some of that money's gonna come from the pine woods reserve fund. And some of it may come from the housing, affordable housing trust fund, and some may come from the state. We're trying to work all that. But CPC share could be 600,000, 700,000, and the idea is to bond it.
But it has to be voted on.
It's a town meeting vote. They're all town meeting votes.
Yep.
Yeah. They need, just boilers alone are 14,000 bucks a piece and they need 32 of them. It's like, right there is like, you know, yeah, like four, $450,000 or something. But you can't have people's heat going down in the winter, you know? I mean, we gotta figure out how to maintain this stuff. It's sort of like the bridges, you know, you, 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 you don't put the siding on, which is one of the projects, and maybe mold gets in there or, you know, other bad things. All of a sudden, it's a much bigger problem than if you just maintained them in the first place. And, and that's why I, I support. That's why I support their party. Anyway, that's enough of that. Anything else? Okay. Roxanne mentioned that she wanted to talk at tomorrow's meeting about whether there's any lake stuff for the CPC that, that they could approach. I said, of course, we can talk about it and I will report back. Did Michael, did you hear whether ARPA money has to be spent by the end of the year?
So ARPA funds need to be committed by December 31st, 2023.
Just committed.
Committed year. Must be expended by December 31st, 2024. So we have roughly one year to appropriate fund, the funds. And we have to use all the funds within two years.
How much?
So we
I think we're at 300.
Yes, we have 382,000 remaining.
And didn't
This is after we've done the following projects. If I can just walk through and then I'll answer any of your questions. So we originally committed to the food program at Trittown Health for two years, 33,600, which we've expended 16,800. We went in on the co-responder program with the police department for 42,000. We did essential pay for the Trittown workers, that was 2,400. We did the essential pay for town hall workers, 83,000. We had the second Zoom room set up at 4,300. And then we have the, the commitment of 16,000 to the Berkshire Community Action in order to do the
Fuel work.
Weatherization.
Yeah.
And that, which then those are the, so right now, we committed to 182,000 in projects and we have a remaining of 382,000 that we need to commit over the next year.
Okay. I know Sewer and Water wanted to do a study and that was like 50,000. Did you give them that?
So I did talk to Sewer and Water, but I had pointed, it was brought up to them about using ARPA funds for sewer and water. This would be stage, this would be the last part of that engineering study that they're doing with DPI. The problem is, is that federal, all the money that we spend under ARPA still needs to be spent under procurement laws of the federal government. Which means we have to go out to bid. Do you, I have tissues in my office.
Oh, the tissue over here?
Behind Michael.
I think he's
There are, so we have to, so that would mean for engine, their cutoff is 10,000 for going out and getting and then 10,000 for bids. They don't have an exemption from engineering. So you'd have to do it for engineering. And I know that they wanted to stay with, the water and sewer commissioners want to stay with DPI. But we can't just go to DPI if we use those funds. If we use those funds.
Okay, so it doesn't work.
Three quotes. I did check with Donna on this and checked with the financial offices. And so we just have to remember that. So anytime we're going out to purchase something with regular procurement, we're, we're covered. Mass procurement meets everything. They just, meets the standards of the federal government. It's just that they don't have the exemptions for engineering. Cause under mass procurement, if you're working with a company like we've been using GZA on, on the lake, if you're gonna continue to use GZA, if, but when federal gets in, then you need to do that. So
There's one other one that I haven't, I haven't weighed in on. I'm not involved in, the chair, the Waldorf School asked me, she, she said, it looks like we're not gonna gonna finalize the deal to actually own the building by February 10th. We'd like to apply to CBC for mitigation, whatever. I said, I can't talk to you about this. I'm recused. You guys are not recused. You're not recused. I think that the church and I think it's a reasonable thing to apply for. And I just think somebody needs to be having these conversations because it could be the town has to apply because the town owns the building right now. You know, so I, you know, just put it out there that like, I was asked and I said, I couldn't help her, but you know, I think she's gonna come to you guys.
Right. Shouldn't be disgusting.
Yeah. We're talking about ARPA.
I, that's right. Oh, no, for CBC.
I know, but we're talking about ARPA. Can we do paving or?
Yes.
And
We can buy equipment. We can do paving. We can do anything. Cause in those cases, regular messages, procurement law meets it. And, and even, I don't think engineering is something we should necessarily not do with ARPA. It's just the understanding that water and sewer would like to
Use that company.
DPI to do all the studies up to this point. They would rather have them
Okay.
do that plan. So then what that might be, and I already talked to Tony, I had my DPW meeting this morning. And we discussed the possibility of using what sewer surplus to pay for that, get to that last step on that one. But then also we talked about needing to upgrade the, the pumps over there. They're about 14,000 a piece or 28,000. That could be something that we would use ARPA, cause we'd go out and get three quotes for that.
Why would we use, why would we use ARPA for that? Does the surplus
Just a consideration, just a consideration.
Okay.
So as we put the budget together, you know, we'll do the analysis. We'll look at where we're taking funds from and the rest. So, yes.
And the other thing is it might be nice to upgrade the playground equipment around town. There's several parks.
And that we'd be giving quotes for anyway. So, right.
And I don't know if we have to go to Parks and Rec or
Well, I think that's where we should start.
We need Parks and Rec to come up with a really good
Plan.
Plan. We asked them
Like wood chips and the
Didn't we ask them for a private town plan?
I, I don't know. I know that, right. We need to, we could ask them what, what equipment they're looking to put in each of the parks and then we could fund that with ARPA funds.
Yeah. Cause our parks are, you really gotta
The, the thing we need to understand is that like we, the three of us are these, are solely responsible for deploying this money at this point. So we don't have to wait till town meeting. We don't have to wait for anything. We can get advice. That's our part of the agenda. If anybody wants to wait, they can. But we don't, if we want to fix a playground, we can do it right now. It's just bandwidth. I mean, obviously the guys have to have the time to do the work. But I just want us to recognize that we, we have some resources to do one-off
But you don't get to choose what goes into the parks. You have an elected parks.
Yeah, we have a
I'm not suggesting we choose. I just, I, I called Nicole three days ago and said, I was doing this meeting. And they had no idea that they had, this is an option to ask us, is all I'm saying. We had to maybe a better job of kind of, you know, keeping everyone on the same page that anyway, she knows now. So, but I don't think she should wait for, cause people are used to the way that the money cycles work. It's like an annual basis. And this is one where, you know, if they've got an identified need, let's use it, cause we gotta deploy it by the end of the year and it's gonna come quickly.
But I, I'd just like to point out that we have a year that we should make a plan or a list of the things maybe to put the money instead of being willy-nilly. Like we can't just like, it's, it's not like free money. It's, it's for the good of the town and, and the good of the people and how to use it and how to use it well. Not just
Right. And we so far have had a kind of a strategy where we tried to use the money to leverage more money in other areas. So that's been sort of our working strategy on how we deploy it. But we don't necessarily have a lot of those left, other than maybe the, you know, the housing production plan or maybe this, yeah, we put the money into housing already. The, the, the housing plan already. And I, I meant the open space plan. You know?
You could drop the ARPA funding to just pave it. You could drop
Yeah, because the roads
one out to bid.
Our roads are terrible.
Money tomorrow.
So we could I understand. Yeah.
Cause the paving needs to be redone.
I think we just come up with, like you said, take our time, come up with
Cause it's January.
And then make, you know, proper decision.
Yeah, like prioritize. And so that way, and then plus everyone will feel like their needs have been addressed.
But that's a process. What you're talking about is, is then meetings with committees or at least conversations with committees. It's always public meetings to discuss those priorities. It's all fine. I completely agree with it. But let's not, we can't, we could probably start it in September and get it done. But we gotta kind of have a plan of how the plan is gonna come out so that at the end we have this document. Cause you know, it
January, we have 12 months, well, 11 months. We can get it done.
Okay. All right. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, what about, wait, whoa, whoa, Mark.
Oh, we didn't appoint Mark. Oh, Mark, I was just, I was just kidding.
Wait, we put that a long time ago.
Yeah, exactly. Make a motion, we appoint Mark Mills to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee. Not, well, I mean, the trust fund itself, yes.
A second.
All right. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Mark, if you're there.
I don't think he is.
Okay, good.
He might have left.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Thank you.